Welcome. Good evening, and if you would, please call, join us in the pledge to call this meeting to order at 6:34. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you again. Welcome. Tori, if you would, help us get our frame of mind corrected.
Please.
All right, so we're gonna take a couple minutes to arrive.
So I would like to start some of our last meeting with a thank you. Ladania is here. You've been with us now for three years. You have led the way. You're one of the first. You were actually the second student rep, I believe.
Yeah.
Or one of two at that point. And you've set the bar high for your predecessors.
Thank you.
Rainbow is carrying the high bar right behind you, so we're looking forward to those behind you carrying the same weight, the same energy, and the same input. We very much thank you for your work and wish you all the best as you move forward. And whatever is you, we've got a little something here for you. And we're gonna give you the world.
Scott's a hole.
That's from her.
Sing with us now.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate it.
I love this. Thank you for your service and dedication.
Yeah. My parents are gonna have a hard time finding a better graduation gift.
We give you the world.
What's the policy on succession of student representatives? Does Ladania get to choose her own?
No.
Short answer.
I wish.
Okay. That was pretty clear. You didn't get an answer to the question. We have a great process in place.
You do, okay.
Very inclusive, in which, we were just talking about it, Rainbow and Ladania want to add to the process that we have used the last couple of years to try and get more students interested in.
You'll hear more later.
During the recording.
Nice.
Very good. All right. Agenda review and/or any adjustments?
Good.
I would like to add a one nomination under 5C.
5C, okay.
A licensed school nurse nomination.
Ooh, good.
And you have the paperwork for that?
I do, okay. Yep. And we don't wait until we get there to hand it out?
Yeah, yeah. Any other adjustments? Pretty much covered.
Yep.
Anybody else? Good. Okay. Our focus on learning this evening, behavior management.
So I wanted to kick it off with a few comments. And first, I want to say thank you to all the people that have come tonight. You know, this is the last week of school.
Yeah, right.
Which tends to be a very high-energy few days. A lot of celebratory, but a lot of last-minute things going on, particularly for seniors. And we're really proud. We have 41 students that are slated to graduate this weekend. Some who are working really hard here in the last hours to make the bar and get there for Saturday afternoon. But I appreciate everybody coming to participate tonight because there's a lot going on in these guys' lives during the day with our kids and with our staff. So thank you for that. I feel like we've made great progress in this area in the last couple of years, and particularly this year with some additional staffing and with some new roles of behavior coaches at both the elementary and the middle high school. And also in the areas of building systems around how we're addressing student behavior. So when, in the future, when we get you the details around the behavior comparisons from last year to this year, you're gonna see increases because we're not letting things slide and we're raising expectations. And so that brings stuff out that we're addressing with kids and then helping learn better coping and better behavioral strategies for them to move forward. Our data systems around capturing that information have gotten much, much better in the last couple of years. And so we're really close to having a pretty consistent K-12 process of capturing all of that data to be considered and looked at in ways of making improvement in the future. At the very end, I'm gonna share the suspension data that you were interested in as a board earlier in the year for the three different grade clusters. But I'm gonna have, we're gonna start with looking at what is the, what's the behavioral approach that's being taken? What are the strategies that are being used? And some of the processes with also a look at what are some of the things we're gonna be doing next year? Okay? So we are going to start. I'm gonna invite Thomas Shearer to come forward. He is the Winewski Middle High School Behavioral Coach, who joined us about mid-year in February in that role, and has done a great job, and will be returning in that role, assuming that the consent agenda is approved, because he's on there tonight. So Thomas, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you very much. I think this is my public initiation after four months here, presenting to you this evening. I want to start by sharing with you...
Maybe? It's never the content, it's always the technology. Just hit the button, yeah. Or the spaces.
I wonder if the computer froze.
Well, what you would have seen.
There you go.
We're building on a vision that's, and an old one, goes back to John Dewey for almost 100 years ago, was presenting on these very same ideas in which the dynamics of behavior and learning are similar, if not the same. So the concept here is that as engaged learning continues to grow and evolve and improve, that you can expect that behavioral challenges will decrease. In this model, there's a connection between the student and the teacher on the top. That's that strong relationship building. And I'm gonna talk about some things that we're moving forward on in terms of building those relationships. On the right-hand side, there's a connection between the teacher and the experience and the work that's been put into GXs. But this is also about the differentiation that's put into making sure that experiences are authentic. And on the left-hand side, that student connection to the experience, that's about novelty, that's about curiosity, it's about those feelings of mastery that are created for students. And as Sean mentioned before, around systems, these are areas that I just want to briefly highlight for tonight, so you have some idea. I could easily talk for two or three hours on the nuances of all of these pieces, but in the five minutes made available to me, I'm just gonna highlight what these are about. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about HART, the new school-wide expectations that we're looking to move forward in just a minute. I have a specific slide coming up on that. Skill building has been a big part of the transformational work that we started together. Skill building in the areas of social awareness, social management. These areas around problem-solving and decision-making have all been put forward into the disciplinary system upgrade, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about later, too. Developmental designs, a large number of the middle school faculty are gonna participate together during summer training around a developmental designs. It is the step beyond the responsive classroom model that the elementary school is already moving forward with. So there'd be a nice seamless approach to management practices within the classroom that are all about being sure that appropriate behaviors are effectively taught and trained with students. And that there's a really strong emphasis in making sure that everyone has the same shared understanding and that practices are shared within the facility as well. The new EST protocols, many of us participated in the training for the EST program, so we piloted it already here in the spring with several students incorporating in new paperwork systems as a way to really create more efficiency in terms of being able to meet students' behavioral needs as well as academic needs in a very clean, concise, and efficient format, so that we can provide more clarity in a quicker way in terms of meeting students' needs more directly.
EST is?
Educational Support Team. And then at the bottom here, improvements to the student orientation. It's an ongoing project that we're looking at right now as students are transitioning up to the high school from middle school, from the elementary school up into the middle school, looking at specific pieces that will be more effective in terms of helping students really hit the ground running and really being able to effectively assimilate into the system, knowing all the behavioral expectations. As I mentioned before, the school-wide expectations that are being proposed and moving forward fit into this format. The reason for making this upgrade is really creating something that fits in neatly with all the GX work that's been done, but it also moves a step further away from a compliance model. This is very much about the "we." And the beauty of a system like this is it allows it to really be space-specific. So here in the library, we'd have its own specific expectations that would connect to what's appropriate and responsible for this space. For example, running would be very appropriate in the gym for the activities that would be happening in a PE class, but would not be appropriate or responsible for the hallway or here in the library. So teams would be working together with students to identify the specific components of what would be appropriate and responsible for all those areas. The other pieces to the puzzle here for hard expectations include honest, engaged, and timely, as well as appropriate and responsible.
A quick overview of that.
And then finally, as I mentioned, around the disciplinary system, we've been working together with the administration to really add more capacity in there, to eliminate some of the loopholes as behaviors work their way into bigger spheres, to find ways to really capture and help students connect to the learning that's necessary to build the skills so that the behaviors will, that we should expect them to be able to continue to be reduced. We've added a callback plan, which is mainly for academics, but it also provides opportunities for us to be doing connections to students about different behavioral pieces. I've taken on doing after-school time, specific to skill building, in those areas that we've been, that I've mentioned before, between 3:00 and 3:00 o'clock. Administrative retention and Saturday retention are two areas that we're looking to build into the system in moving forward. Right now, they're in the planning stages, although administrative retention has been piloted, and I think there's some success that's coming out of that, too.
What does that mean?
I'm sorry, which?
Administrative retention, sorry.
Oh, it's similar to the after-school skill-building session, so it would be an opportunity after-school to connect directly with an administrator, to have a sit-down conversation meeting, to talk about what the behavioral issues are about, and start to do some planning there. Looking at reentry meetings as another opportunity to be able to connect with families and do planning there as well. And a lot of work has been done with Officer Solomon and the Community Repertitive Board, too, in being able to take some of the larger behaviors that happen and come up with a more community-focused approach to that. And I feel like that's been incredibly successful, and look forward to being involved more with them, too.
Great. What time is it? Thank you.
Let's ask.
All right.
I have posted. So I started last summer by working with a team of Kristin, myself, a special educator, and our guidance counselor, to create, all together to create some common understandings, common language around behavior expectations for our students. And then we, and some consistency across every space in the school. And then we did, last summer, started talking about responsive classroom and did some preventative work with our teachers around that. But this was the biggest piece. So Kristin can talk about that, and then I'm gonna talk about next steps. So I've packed it.
It's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you may have guessed, children in school and living in classrooms have behavior. And our classroom teachers were amazing and fabulous, do a great job handling just about any behavior. Categorize it as major and minor behavior. And so they are expected, as you can see in this category, as minor behavior to manage it in the classroom. So our goal is to keep the children in the classroom, feel a sense of belonging in the classroom, develop relationships with their peers in the classroom. That is where students should be, where they should have a sense of belongings in the classroom. So down this side of the column, you can see, these are the strategies, along with responsive classroom and with our guidance, to help support them in the classroom. On this side, this is the major column. And this is really where they call us. And this lovely thing called texting, which has really helped us, where teachers can just send us a little text, which is really nice, because it also doesn't set off the child. So if you don't, you know, Sarah's blowing out in the corner, that also doesn't set the child off. So the teacher could just, you know, send us a little text, come help me with Sarah. Student doesn't hear us, the student doesn't hear the teacher, and we're able to go in and support this student. It's an amazing thing, that technology, where it's really discreet, it really helps de-escalate the child.
Draws less attention from everybody in the class.
Exactly. It really provides, I mean, it's really, it provides privacy. It's just amazing. So that is when the teacher on these behaviors right here can call for assistance, or if these minor behaviors just occur over and over and over again, and the teacher just really needs help with that behavior. So it's really like these different categories where the teacher would need support. So on this side for minors, if it just continues and it's just becoming a distraction over and over again, or if a major behavior occurs. So then, um, like distracting. So on this side, you can just turn the page, and it just really shows an example of a minor behavior the teacher may occur. So a big one is work refusal. You don't really need to call help for work refusal. I know it's really irritating to happen, but we can provide strategies for a student confused to do work. A lot of times, just accommodating, the child just may need a break. That's really where it just meets with the team, and you don't need to call for help for work refusal, those bigger behaviors that happen. So it's really about just keeping the child in the classroom, providing support. Our teachers are fabulous, they've never called for help for that. But that's just to paint the minor behavior that you've used for an example. If you flip over, example bowling, that's considered a major, we have a process for that. Sarah Murphy, our guidance counselor, is the bowling investigator. We have a whole investigative process with that. It's a formal process, so that would be considered a major, and we have a whole process for that. Next page, vandalism. We have another system for that, that's considered a major, and we have a whole process for that. So these are just examples of that, fighting, physical contact, so we can do the same.
What's a buddy classroom?
So each student, each classroom teacher has a, through their classroom, who they work with, their classroom teacher, and it's considered the buddy classroom. So it's part of responsive classroom. So in their own classroom is a take-a-break space, so there would be a, so even in the library, they have a take-a-break space, and there would be a table where they would go, where they would be able to de-escalate, or just be able to be left alone, where they would take a break. If that doesn't work, the child themselves can take a break, or a teacher could ask them to take a break. If that doesn't work, then they could go to a separate classroom. So for example, Mrs. Benjamin may go to Mrs. Getz's class for a buddy classroom, and they already know that, each child knows that that's their buddy classroom. You need to go take a break to the buddy classroom. And the student will go calmly to Mrs. Getz's classroom for a buddy classroom. That way, they're able to go take a break, they can talk to a different teacher about what happened. That teacher has no idea what happened, is just talking to a fresh person, helps de-escalate the student, it's a fresh face, they're able to re-enter the different classroom, move on, and then they go back. It's just a great way just to go to a different setting and take a break, just like how we would go to a different place to go take a break, or go take a walk. It's just a great way, it has an outlet to take different faces. It's part of responsive classroom. And we've been doing that, it's been great. Doesn't work for all children, just like how different coping that is in would work for all of us, but it seems to work really well for a lot of kids. Okay, so move on from fighting. Abusive language and threat, that's different than harassment. Harassment would go, again, to Sarah Murphy, that's just like for bowling, we have a whole different process for that, that has a formal investigative process that we would do for that. But abusive language and threat is considered a major, and that's a heavy one, the process that we would do in the student support room. So for behavior support requests, Sarah has introduced me to Google Docs. I've learned a lot from her, the technology. I know I didn't do this, but I do know how to do Google Docs. Every teacher in JFK knows how to figure out how to do Google Docs. Google Docs. So they can learn how to do behavior support requests, and they can figure out how to get support from the student support room, that's Mr. Alfred and I, and they can have support on a behavior that they need help with in the classroom. And so they fill it out, and then they get email that they need help with a certain behavior in the classroom, and we can help support them with that.
That's not an in-the-moment behavior. That's like Johnny breaks his pencil every time we do math, and I've given him 500 pencils this year, and I don't know what else to do. Can you come in and do an observation and give me ideas?
Yeah. For Google Docs. I think I'm, I know, it's really interesting. The next page, incident referral form. This is in the moment, so every time they call me or text me, they have to fill out this data form. This is considered our data. So they need to figure out which referral type. Is it a minor type times three, which means that minor behavior keeps occurring in the classroom where they need support? Or a major, they need to fill that out. They need to fill out the student's name, the grade, whether or not that student is on IEP, who is referring, the date, the time, the location, what type of behavior that is. Is it defiant? Is it physical aggression? Is it harassment? The type of behaviors we looked at before? Is it physical aggression? Who else is involved? Is it the peers, is it the teacher? A lot of times, it's the substitute, just to let you know who's helping, who it is. Or is it just themselves? Or is it somebody else? What did you do before? Did it immediately happen? Did it happen to take a break? Did you do buddy classroom? Did you take a walk before? We want to know what strategies you tried and do before this behavior happens. And then, a lot of times, they write down what happened before. Then they submit it.
I want to think, Kristin, just to add, one of the things that this, really helpful with this is pattern identification. So you look at times, places, days of the week. You know, we see a spike in behaviors on certain days of the week. Thursdays, I think, is the day, right?
Yep.
Mondays and Tuesdays, and it kind of builds.
Yeah, it's interesting how it's Thursdays, because the anxiety of Friday, which is interesting, because you would think it'd be Friday.
Right.
The anxiety of the weekend.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. You've been sort of maintaining it altogether, and it's like...
Siblings, we noticed a pattern with siblings as well, so it's really interesting.
But this pattern identification can be good to figure out for the student, but also maybe to figure out for the teacher.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, when this is happening, and is it a particular time in the class, a subject, and things like that, or can a teacher take in a different approach? So it's nice to have all of these. It takes some time, but it's nice for pattern identification.
So they do this after, because they text you, and then, so this happens after?
Yeah, a lot of times, they just say, I need support with this. And Google Docs makes a fancy graph, apparently, as well.
I know.
To figure that out, which is interesting. They push submit, and then we get it via email. So that's what they do. So part of responsive classroom is also providing positive behavior supports. And just right here are some suggestions that we did when we were meeting in the summertime about what classroom teachers could do to provide that positive support. And just, these are some lists of things that teachers do when they have, I don't know, they create a classroom goal, so it could be 20 green thoughts that you need to earn this week, and these are some things that they could do. They could earn extra recess, a computer party, they could do lots of things that they can provide that motivation to have a great week. And we tried today. Today was a fun day. We're exhausted, but we had that sealed fun day. So we're a little delirious right now, because we had a fun day.
We did. I'm gonna go really fast. So that's what we're doing now. So then our next steps for Alice is that Thomas talked a little bit about the EST system that comes out of that Mason's Care Conference that we all went to. So we're going to BAST in two weeks, and bringing a team to BAST where we work on our multi-tier system of support with behavior, using that same basis from the Mason's Care work to help create a new EST system for the JFK side that models after that same thing. We look at our PDIS and revamping that and re-energizing it and making it official, that we actually do it, which means this, Stars, will probably go away. Hence why all the kids got to take their T-shirts home today forever and ever. And we have been talking about doing the HART-K, you know, elementary and middle high, so that it's a school-wide, behavior expectations. And then the responsive classroom course we're also doing, so that's the RC1 course, which leads into developmental design, so it's like the elementary version, and all the classroom teachers will be, or go into that RC1 course this summer at some point, even all the new hires. Oh, and we're gonna add at least one to two BIs to the student support room for next year.
Behavior interventionists.
Support the work.
Great, thanks. So I'll do the last piece on the suspension data, and then question, yeah, go ahead.
I was just curious, are you guys involving the pre-K teachers also with the responsive classroom?
And the HART model? So the, some of our preschool teachers are opting to take the course this summer and some aren't. It's outside of contracted hours.
Okay. So I was just wondering how that tied in with the school, because I know it's a little...
Yeah, so we, I've been having conversations with them, and they, I don't think they know about the HART piece, because we have, so that's not something we'll decide as an elementary school until we're at BAST, because we want to make a team decision on that, and whether we do all five, whether we do three, or if we do five in middle high, we need to make choices. But those are conversations we've had. They just...
Thank you. So here's the data for you guys.
Berinda?
We have two misses.
Oh, just kidding.
Take it back.
Oh.
You have a look at that one, and then you have a look at this one.
I'll just look at, I just put what it is in a minute. Here, just suspension data.
Yes, it is.
Continue the meeting.
So many behaviors on such an early level right now.
And yours?
I'm glad this is happening.
Okay. So this is this year's data. Only this year's, no yearly comparison at this point. So if you look at the JFK sheet, this is based on 357 students, total enrollment. The suspensions by type, so there is not an in-school suspension model in the elementary.
And I can explain that, too.
And so, yeah, if, if, if we, if you want to ask about that, Kristin can explain. And the 33 suspensions represent 21 different students. So clearly, there are students who have had multiple suspension incidents. And then the total days out of school, each one of those suspensions was a day. And then you have the breakout by gender. More males, which is borne out across every pool of data that you look at, at every level. That boys tend to win in that category.
Push the limits.
Need more movement.
The number of ELL students, so that's nine. So that could be, again, not nine individual students. It could be a single student having multiple suspension events. And the same for by race. Those could be, those don't represent single students, it could be, again, one student with multiple suspensions. And then on the right, you have by disability. What I would, the 16 in the area of disability, what I would say, that would be, if I was looking at this for the first time and I was a board member, I would kind of go, hmm, wow, 16, and then there's 33. What I would tell you is that with our high rates of students identified as, with emo- with emotional disturbance, that makes sense to me. We have some students with some, some pretty severe, uh, ED behavior sets that, that the elementary deals with on a daily basis, and there are times that, when those major behaviors, occur, that a student needs to be out for the safety of themselves and others. So that is the elementary data. On the second sheet, you have the middle school on one side and the high school on the other. So again, the middle school, a hundred and sixty-six students in that sixth through eighth grade cluster. A total of, of eighty-eight, uh, suspensions, with, uh, thirty-one of those being in school. So there is an in-school suspension model in the middle high school. And represents forty-two different students. And then the total days out of school of those suspensions. So they vary in the number of days, but the to- the total, um, of those, fifty-seven out of schools is a hundred and two.
That's, that's twenty-five percent of students, huh? That's one, that's one out of every four students.
Right, forty-two different students, yep.
Except that...
Yep, it's a quarter.
Hundred and sixty-six.
Right.
That's a lot of kids.
Yep. The, the gender is actually a closer break. Which you typically don't see, uh, uh, in both in and out of school. ELL. And, uh, by race, again, uh, you can see at the bottom of the, in that, um, box, um, white students, um, with the majority of the suspensions in the middle school. And then again, the disability, uh, category is, is relatively high. Although again, we would have to dig deeper in to see how many kids does that really represent?
How many individuals?
My sense, from, uh, looking at the raw data pretty quickly, is that there are a few pretty heavy hitters that make up most of that. Typically with pretty severe, uh, emotional disturbance.
And would an improved data collection be able to provide that information? Because I think that it's more telling, so that it's more clear around heavy hitters versus...
Yes, and we have that.
Because it is alarming.
Right, we have that, and they look at that, you know, at least monthly, so they're able to see.
Okay.
What's happening, yep. And it has that, uh, the subgroups, so they can see by IEP and ELL and so forth.
And again, this is the first year that this da- this type of data's been...
It's the first day, we're, first year we're mining it this way, yeah.
Okay.
The high school. Again, there is an in-school suspension model. Forty-six, uh, out of school, thirty, which represents thirty-one different students. The total days there is much higher, because, uh, at the high school level, uh, some of the violations that, um, either may or, or required suspension tend to be more days, anywhere from three to ten days. Uh, things like tobacco and alcohol and, uh, drug, um, harassment, uh, fighting, those kinds of things are, tend to be multiple day, uh, suspensions. Two to one, pretty much in the, uh, out-of-school, um, gender section. And then, more even in the, uh, in the by-race section. And that would, to some degree, make sense, because there's a higher rate, a higher percentage of ELL students, uh, in the high school. It's, it's up, uh, around fifty percent or so. And the suspension by disability, again, which holds the same, uh, I think the same tenet of, we have some students with some pretty severe emotional disturbance at all levels of our, of our school, um, that sometimes exhibit those behaviors that require suspension.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm. So, questions for, for myself on this, or for any of our presenters on, uh, this or anything else that they presented on tonight?
Well, on this last piece, if, um, you know, next time we look at something like this, it would, I think it would be helpful to be able to compare apples to apples and have, you know, how many different students are we talking about in each of these categories? So then you can know sort of proportionally what that means in thirty-one.
Got to be a little bit careful depending on a sample size.
Right.
Because as you get down toward one student, it becomes identifiable. So we've got to be a little bit careful on the minimums that we hit.
Yeah.
I agree that it might give you a better balance visually.
Yeah, but we can't tell, like, so if the concern is that, you know, uh, poor kids, uh, kids of color and kids in special ed get suspended more often than their peers, like, we have no way of knowing from this data if that's true or not.
Understood, yeah.
Uh, and not one to violate any confidentiality.
You know, well, it's interesting, though, that, uh, there are a smaller proportion of students, in fact, smaller number of students and a very much reduced portion, proportion of students that are getting severe discipline in the high school than in the middle school. Is that just a function of development and age? Which is harder to manage middle school kids? That's what I got to look forward to?
Oh, middle school.
You have no idea. You have no idea.
Just gets better.
We'll just let them learn that one on his own.
Right.
Trust me, I'll make the toddler, you know, three.
Yeah, great. Yeah, so I mean, it's, you know, it's like, it's hard to know. I mean, if, so if I look at the, the suspensions by race in the high school one, you know, there, there I sort of raise an eyebrow thinking, wow, that, you know, there's like more kids being suspended of color than white kids, and I know there's not more kids of color in the school than white kids, right?
So maybe a percentage of the total? What is that, number of students as a percentage of the total?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Because if it's, if it's percentage, like, because, because it, it looks like what we want the data for is just making sure, from this perspective, that we are honoring, um, sort of a natural trend, that these three, um, populations tend to be suspended more and in more trouble. So where, where are we i- in that?
A high level, twenty percent of the population, eighty percent of the punishment.
From a high level, like, we don't need to know people, but just, as an organization, you know, where, where are we with that? And this, you know, kind of gets us there a little bit, but it, it's, it's still really unclear.
Yeah.
But it's a step.
It's a great start.
It's a great start.
I'm excited.
And I think what I love, too, is that, the, the new system that was just described, and all the different things that are being put in place to meet kids where they are, to give them the learning that they need and the experience that they need, and making, you know, like, I love that circle graph that you did of like teacher-student experience, so that as we improve experiences and more personalized education, therefore more engaged education, therefore, you know, we see the behaviors. So it, the good news is, I feel like we're meeting our population, you know, meeting our kids where they need the, the, some good learning, and some good digging in. And, and then now, we can just get this sort through, okay, well, we also want to make sure we're caring for the most vulnerable among us. And so this data would help percentage-wise to make sure that we are all, you know, very thoughtful about that, and, and what our trends are. With this really amazing new structure.
Yeah. And I'm wondering, um, if, if there is, um, I mean, you guys have so many great tools and frameworks and stuff, and I'm curious about where kind of restorative principles and practices fall into, into the whole, you know, set of tools that you guys have?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great question. And one of the things we're talking about is, um, right now, policy violations. We're following policy, and policy sometimes, when it, um, when it's issues related to, let's say, um, drugs, alcohol, tobacco.
Yeah.
Um, the policy outlines very specifically what we need to be doing. One of the explorations is, um, can we, through restorative practices, offer students something different? Where there's an educational component, um, an opportunity for some restitution to come along with this, and, and not follow a- 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 as an option for policy. You can be suspended, we can turn this into, um, maybe a shorter suspension or no suspension, with education and a learning component that's really structured.
Yeah.
So those are conversations that we're having.
Yeah.
As well, going into restorative practices.
Yeah. Are you, so are you finding that the policies that we have in place now are limiting your options to do that? Because, you know, there's mandatory minimums.
I think that, for example, one of the things that came up in the, uh, last review that's, uh, on the agenda, the, uh, student alcohol and drug abuse.
Yeah.
We found, and, and someone on the board also found in the procedures, there was like a required suspension or something.
Yeah.
And so we shifted procedurally to may.
Okay.
Right.
To give some more, uh, autonomy to make a, uh, an administrative decision about whether they need to be out or not.
And then we added restorative, too?
We, I think we did, we did add a restorative. And so it's great that you brought up policy, because that is something that we have talked about in the last couple of months, is making sure that the policies are allowing for opportunities for restorative practices and, and more options. So if we've fallen short on that, then that's great information for us.
Even more broadly, to your point, though, if what is in a policy is inhibiting you from doing something that we believe is right, we have the right to review it, Sean can drag it back in, we can go through it, make your recommendations. We just got to make sure that at the end of the day, we're consistent, and, and we have our basis covered, that if something happens, we can take a prescribed action that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, you know, don't hesitate to, you know, this policy is handcuffing me from doing the right thing.
Right.
We can certainly work through that as quickly as the next meeting.
Yeah.
So...
Also, I would add around the restorative practices, I think our relationship this year with the community justice has been outstanding and really useful, and it be- it's now become a step that is, is readily used in the process.
Yeah.
And we have people, Eli and, and, um, Patty Neket, you know, they come to the school, they run those meetings, so it's a different...
They run them here?
Yeah.
Great.
And so it's a different vibe than the principal sitting down with me again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Somebody, and so there's a broader perspective that they're getting, their parent is present, their gar- their guardian.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, that, that's a, a great restorative practice right there.
Yeah. Well, and when I saw that, I was a little nervous that you guys were going down there, but it's great that they're coming up here to keep it in, in the community here.
And our SRO, Dave Solomon's done a great job of linking, you know, he's the liaison to, that, that makes all that happen.
Another great community-school connection.
Yeah.
That's, makes it better for everybody.
Totally.
Yeah, speaking all the same language, and, and support, like seeing broader support.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I would even put that under our, uh, ends piece about, um, you know, community, global and community connections.
Local, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that is like bringing the resources of the community together.
Local engaged.
On an issue.
Yeah. Another strength.
Yeah?
Of Winuski.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
P.S.
I'm not sure, any other, any other comments?
Well, so, I just want to appreciate that you guys did this, I didn't mean to, to criticize it right off the bat. I'm, I'm very grateful for you to, for putting that data together, because I know we asked for it. And, you know, I'd love to see how it all breaks out, so we can compare apples to apples.
Awesome.
Got it.
So, one thing, and Sean will toss this in as a more generic comment. We've got some data, uh, we can collect it, we know what it is. One of the big pushes, well, when you've got one data point, one year, not a big deal, we're not drawing any straight lines yet.
Yeah.
But when you put that second data point in, and it gets worse, there's a tendency to think we've failed. I want to make sure that we don't make the numbers look good. The idea here is to have a calm classroom that is well-run, the kids understand, they understand the details and the need, and they, they follow the rules. I don't want to get the, and this goes for ends when we get to test scores and, and grades and all that. I don't want to get us to the point where we make the numbers look great.
Yeah.
And have classrooms that you just can't work in. So, as we can get to the, it's just like medicine, right? We can find cancers earlier, does that mean the rate is increasing? No, we just got them earlier. But you've got to do the right thing. So keep that in mind as we move forward, please.
It's the H in heart, honesty.
And if it's us that's pushing you in the wrong direction, let us know. Okay? Let us know through Sean that this doesn't make sense. The tendency is to try to get them reduced.
The way we talk about that and, and, and the leadership team is the brutal truths. What are the brutal truths that we see and that we need to address? And I think that some of this was not being addressed with as much energy the, as we are, have done this year, and we're continuing to move. But like I've said before, when you uncover that stuff, then you have to deal with it.
And the real work begins, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
It's the positive stuff.
It's the fix, not the find.
Yep, and that's when we come to you, and we also say we need the support through the budget, through policy, in order to make this stuff happen.
And that's the big thing I think I'm taking out of the focus on learning, is the things that are coming up in the school as we go through them, that we're going to need to see in the budget. Extra help in ELL, head counts down, uh, the, the high school's new path, what is that? And we've got some, you know, maintenance things that we have to do, but we understood those, because we had seen them. So, it's been a good tieback to what it is the work we're trying to do, so. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Have a great day and a half!
See you on Friday. For my bi-annual visit.
You're the book, you're the bookends, right?
That's right. Welcome, goodbye.
Good welcome, goodbye. Good night, nice to meet you.
Good night, guys, thanks.
All right.
Okay, public comments, seeing no one left. Okay. And then as we get into the consent agenda, we do have one handout to enable, uh...
One for, uh, Brenda.
Yep. Enabled, uh, one last, the adder for the teacher nomination.
Now, you adding this into the consent agenda or into the motion?
Uh, this will be added into the motion to be added into the consent as we move forward, right?
Okay. Because I always...
Yep. And we can't add it now into the...
But we can into the motion.
Right. Uh, so, to start, I would accept the motion to accept the consent agenda with the add of the school nurse nomination.
So moved.
Okay, any other discussion?
Great career. Sorry, that's basic, consent agenda, no discussion.
Oh, we're really excited about her.
Yeah, I had, uh, I had just a couple, um, and I wanted to just make sure we touched on it, because I don't think we hit it anywhere else here. Uh, one item was the decision by the Colchester School Board to table, uh, going any further with a grant, a study on consolidation or merger. With that, we'll need to, I think, discuss where we go from here. I believe it is the waiver path at this point.
Right, I think that would, uh, we could, in the annual agenda planning, later in the agenda, we could talk about where that might go.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, because I want to make sure we don't lose that, move forward, get it locked up and sealed up and closed up and done. Oh, um, the other piece, I just, the, I don't want to talk too, too much getting into the, um, consent agenda topics, but it, it warmed me to read the Fairfax piece that Sue Messier did with the middle school girls softball team.
That was beautiful, yeah.
It is the way we want to live and the way we want our kids to learn through our actions, so I want to thank Sue publicly for that. I think that is just an amazing piece of thoughtfulness, if nothing else.
Yeah, that was a good one.
All right. So with that, all those in favor accepting the consent agenda, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Great. Then, from an executive's limitations perspective, we have a section here now on asset, under protect, asset protection two-six, so Sean, I'll let you take that discussion away.
Yes, okay. So, most of you are on your screens, I would point you to pull up six A. And then I'm going to have some additional printed backup to share with you. So, first, on six, as outlined in, in six A, the walk-in cooler freezer, we had asked the board to approve seventeen thousand nine hundred and twelve. At this point, based on the food service balance, we believe that we're not going to need that. And that we'll be able to cover the full expense of the walk-in cooler freezer through the, the food service account.
That's great.
Okay?
And those monies additional come from paid lunches?
Uh, they come from their reimbursement, most of it comes from the federal reimbursement. So the abbey, they, for every meal that they serve, they get reimbursement from the feds on that and that's what comes back to them.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Okay.
And all we pay, we pay them a, you know, it's our contract with them is basically a no-loss for us contract. If they, through their reimbursement, because we're on the community eligibility provision and paying, and feeding all kids for free, if they don't make money off their reimbursement with, via their, their expenses and revenues, then that's their problem.
Okay.
And all we pay them is a management, annual management fee.
Okay.
And so the surplus comes from?
So the surplus comes from the reimbursement that they receive from, from federal funds.
Then they're paying for it?
So they're paying on the expense side to produce the food and the meals.
Right.
And then they get a certain amount back.
Right, I, well, I know all about the food, how does that entail to the freezer that is going to be on property?
Are they paying for it?
There's a favorable balance from the reimbursements.
To them, though?
Yes, to them. And that's all part of the food service account.
And so they're buying a fridge?
Which is what is applicable in buying the freezer.
Right.
Still school property, though?
Yes. Yes.
A little confusing there.
Yep.
Okay. So they don't, they don't just pocket that money and run and then say, buy us a new freezer?
Nope.
Okay, right.
It's good for us.
Good deal. That food service thing is confusing, but sounds like a great deal for us.
It is the biggest load of work, though.
Good deal for everybody.
Yeah.
Lot of work.
Uh, so the second piece, summer renovations, we have kind of moved across the building through our bathrooms and renovating some of them, particularly the ones out here, the JFK bathrooms need work.
Yes, they do.
Articians and some paint and some serious cleaning and so forth. Uh, so that along with the climate control and alarm systems and tying those in together, we had some issues this year with, they didn't interact very well during an emergency situation. And so we want to remedy that with pneumatics, I was told. I couldn't explain that in great detail to you, but we, we have our, our facilities director who is saying that this would be a really wise thing to do, to tie those all together. So for that bundle of renovations, we're asking up to, the board to allot up to fifteen thousand dollars. And I'm going to run, I kind of want to run through all of these first so you get the big picture and then we can come back and you can have discussion and, and take action on, on them individually. So the next one is the electronic sign. And one of the biggest challenges that I've found since we've been here is we want to maximize our ways of communicating with the community. And we've done a lot with our website, we've done a lot with our mass messaging system, with being able to translate into different languages, we have our new, our monthly newsletter. We still put stuff in kids' backpacks when needed and so forth. But a lot of people move in and out of here on a daily basis and they have to go by that, that area of the sign out there. It takes our maintenance guys a lot of time and then there's a lot of effort in putting all of the messages together and when do they need to go up and they need to be changed, you can only have a single message up there at once.
Talking about the one by the light over there?
Yeah, the green, yeah. And so, I come from a place where we had one and it was wonderful and it makes a lot of the, the planning very easy and, and you can load everything up on the front end so that it runs and it doesn't require a lot of maintenance. The techno, the technology has gotten better and better in the last few years in terms of what you can do with color and images and so forth. So, we embarked upon this, I had heard the history that this has been embarked upon before.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
The power is out there, that was one of the things that was done, the power was brought out there, it's right next to the sign, it's ready.
Advocated for, for years.
So, what we did, we, we went to Vermont Sign and we got a couple of, three parents joined the crew, we had somebody from the technology department, we had somebody from facilities, three parents. And we had them bring signs in and show us what they do and the different colors and pixels and all that good stuff. So that we could then get an idea of how to write a proper RFP. So we did that and we had, we wrote it with four different options. We received one bid.
Wow.
We had, and that was the date, ending date for the bid was yesterday, it was from Vermont Sign. So we have a waiver request in, we're confident that we would get that waiver, so.
Waiver because you need three or something?
Yeah.
You're supposed to have three, right?
So, I have all the backup that I will walk, that I can walk through with you. Do you want to do that now or do you want me to do the overview on the switches and fiber first?
Do overview?
Go on to the overview.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
I think we're going to say yes.
So the, the switches and fiber runs, so we discovered later than I had hoped through our, our technology consultant that the, the switches in the building, what the switches do is they regulate network traffic. So primarily all the stuff that's happening over the internet. And so there's several switches all over the building and when usage is high in one place, it'll kind of modulate that to different places so that the lag times are, the, the response times are better. Between these switches, you have to have fiber that runs between them so that they can talk to each other. So we found out that the maintenance agreement on the switches that we currently have was going to run out and the company who provides the maintenance says they're end of life, we're not going to be able to service them anymore. So, our technology consultant said, we got to do something, we got to get new switches. We also were experiencing, you guys have probably experienced, some pretty laggy network stuff, particularly over in and around the, the French room and up, I think, in the business room sometimes. So, there was an area of the building that was being hit by all of this. So, Marion Kenseth, our consultant, she did all of the bidding, that's what we pay her to do, she pulled everything together. We got bids, which I will show you the, the details on, and we have a recommendation for you. This is a, over a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project. We have what's called E-Rate, which is a federal program that supports schools who put in proper filtering in their schools and who are trying to expand access to technology for public school students.
That's awesome.
So, we're asking for up to twenty thousand dollars to support, you know, an over a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project. So.
Great.
Given that.
And that, that was bid, I mean, she, she got multiple bids?
Yes, and well, I have backup on that, that I can show you the, the different bids and then the recommendation that we're making. So I guess at this point, I'd suggest maybe we go back up to the summer renovation action and work our way back down the bullets.
I mean, I don't, does anybody have any objections to any of those?
Well, I have one question about how is the fifteen K going to be raised, is that for sure raising or for the sign?
Oh, the balance of the sign, yeah.
So I, I would like to talk a little bit about that because the four options range from twenty-nine thousand to seventeen. So, the, the, the parents that were working with us were confident that we could get somewhere between five to ten thousand from PTO. What I, I was conservative in my ask from the board for fifteen thousand, I didn't know where this was going to end up, I was hoping that maybe it was going to be closer to twenty-five and thinking we would go find the ten. And maybe all from PTO, but at least five and then we'd go find the five from others. I, I would be more than happy to raise the ask from the board a little bit higher than fifteen, whatever you were comfortable with, so that it would make it easier to accomplish the sign this summer. Because if we have to go out and raise more money, it could delay the installation.
I would say take what you need to have all of it to do it this summer, in my opinion.
It costs twenty-nine?
Yeah, that's the.
Between twenty-nine and seventeen.
Yeah.
That's a big range, like.
So that's the detail I'll share with you with, with all the, the different types. And, so how do you guys want to do this? Do you want to, I, I mean, I, what I heard you kind of saying was, well, can we bundle it, but?
Well, I didn't realize there was that range, I mean, I'm into all these, I think we're all into all these, it probably would make sense to tell us what the difference between a twenty-seven thousand dollar sign is and a seventeen thousand dollar sign is.
So why don't we, why don't we go back to the agenda and kind of go in order? So the action on summer ren, on the summer renovation up to fifteen would be the first one?
Yeah, do, but we don't need any more, I mean, I feel like the JFK bathrooms and the portion, yes.
Right.
Right? I mean, that needed to happen like five years ago, so ding 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 ding.
Yeah.
So we're just going to go through each bullet, so now the electronic sign is that difference between the twenty-nine thousand version and the seventeen thousand version.
Right, so you would just need a motion on the summer renovations up to fifteen thousand to start and do that one, this is an action.
Right. To do them one at a time.
Okay.
Right.
I move that we approve the fifteen thousand dollar request to renovate the JFK bathrooms and upgrade portions of our climate control and alarm systems.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
So moved.
Is it about the walk-in cooler? Does that match?
Don't need to do anything on that one.
You're paying for it, you have extra seventeen thousand dollars to pay for something else.
You guys want to see those?
We can share if need be.
Oh, there's pictures!
I'm very excited.
I know, right?
Okay. So, here's the, the summary on the first page, you have four options. And I'm, and I'm going to start with option one. And if you're skipping ahead, option one and option two are the same picture, the color picture. So option one and two are both full color, two-sided displays, so you can see them on either side. The eight line and six lines are kind of the lines on the screen where you can put text and images. The smaller pixels means a sharper image, so that is really the main difference between one and two, is that you're going to get a sharper image, particularly if you were to put pictures of people and, and other things on it. And if you were to flip to your, that first picture of the Champlain Valley Expo, that's an example of one that has the full color, two-sided, eight lines with the, the sharpest pixels, pretty much that you can buy unless you're doing something, you know, at Texas Stadium or something.
What is the size on the one we're looking at, is there, are these all the same size physically?
The, yeah, the size is in the quotation behind that.
Active area?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So it's almost seven feet wide?
Yeah, six and a half feet by three.
Yeah.
So all in all, the, the difference is the sharpness and then, you know, about twenty-five hundred bucks difference. And the add alternates are the same in all of these and, you know, they include, they include things like training on the technology, you know, because you can, they're, they're web-based. So what we would be doing is, is having a couple of people who would, who would be responsible for inputting all the information or the images or whatever and keeping it up to date. So option three is a monochrome red, so single color, two-sided, it has the eight lines and you have a picture of the CVU one there.
Yeah.
And that's what that looks like.
The CVU on six lines, okay.
I think there might be one on the bottom, but.
Yeah, it looks like.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, you're right.
Calling that one sick. Which means we have two more lines.
Julian, expert on that one, technically be option four? Would that be option four then? Because it looks like option four is just like option three except the eight lines and six lines.
Four is, yeah, six line and it's a different color.
Amber, yeah, it's not as bright.
Amber.
I mean, I like option three.
This does, this does not include any of the landscaping that you might do, like you see in the, in the CVU and the Colchester one with the brick or the stonework or whatever.
Oh, that, that's separate?
So landscape, any landscaping that we would do would be out of pocket after that.
Then you can go to PTO and ask for funds for that kind of stuff.
Right.
I like three, here's why, I don't think we need twenty-seven colors, I think we do need as many lines as possible. If red shows up brighter than amber, then we can keep that, it's cheaper than twenty-nine. And, you know, I think it gets the job done, eight lines and a lot of visibility seems good to me.
I agree.
So, our administrative recommendation was going to be for one or two because of the technology and how it, how it changes. And this, we figure making the investment early is going to allow us to do some things that we may not, like images. So one of the things we thought about is we could have pictures on the screen. That, that doesn't allow, you can't do that with option three and four.
You're not worried about traffic accidents.
Well, that was one of the concerns with the size is.
Well, I'm not worried about the size, but if you have pictures of their kids hanging or whatever, oh, is that so-and-so, I mean, a couple of rear ends there.
There's also the actual being able, if, if it's all in English, like it's also the ability to make.
Well, that's what I was just going to ask, can you?
Visual.
Is it multi font?
Is, is, are you going to be able to use multi languages?
Yes.
Okay. And all of them or just the first two options?
Yep. Yeah, that has to do with the software, not the display quality.
I'm, I'm for one, because I feel like these other two are probably going to be updating theirs at some point, you know, I, I feel like.
You're for option one?
Yeah, because I feel like option one is.
That's a huge sign.
Is updated and these were probably bought.
We're just talking about six by three piece, not this whole.
All four, all four options are the same size.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll probably put something like that on.
Yeah, that's just an example of the display sharpness, really.
And I'm fine with that, too. Option one?
Yes.
Well, but wait a minute, why would you need option one?
Because the technology is, is further along than the ones with just.
I mean, like technology, we just need to say things, right? And there's not a lot of, like, we're not going to be playing like Tetris on there or anything, it's just going to be like.
Fashion plans.
April Fool's Day is on a school day.
Well, that's true.
You better be directing traffic.
I feel like with, with communication, which is, you're right, we do, do just need to say things. If the capacity in the technology is better for administration to get the things up that we need to get up, the one thing that we struggle with, I feel like in this community, is communication.
Yeah.
You know, is for us, like, I check that thing and it never always, it doesn't really tell me what is really going on.
Sure.
I agree with that.
And it needs to because for some reason, strangely enough, some of those flyers in the backpacks don't always make it home. And if that's our truly, oh, and also the monthly newsletter, awesome, it's once a month. We don't get the details that you actually need as a parent to be prepared for what's happening.
What is the color sign given that the other ones don't?
But it's not just the color, right? So it's not just the color, it's to be, the ability to do pictures as well. And with our population, I feel like it's great to have some pictorial information displayed as well as words. I mean, there's, so there's multiple, I mean, I'm looking at it from a special eye length, is that, you know, being able to use pictures is also communicating a lot of information. And it's not just relying on text.
Although, there is one thing, the whole thing about traffic and being a distraction is huge.
And if you're, and if we can be able to change the text to the different languages, that's going to solve that problem.
There's also a stoplight out there, people aren't always, I mean, there's, there's a light right in front of the school.
Well, it's for the people coming up Main Street, passing through and down Main Street, passing through.
Right, but you are, are getting stopped every now and again and you can see it there, too.
Unless you're looking and you don't realize the car in front of you stopped.
I, well, we could ask everybody else who has these signs, how often do they deal with traffic accidents?
If you look in the areas that, well, the fair one is definitely one in a very high-traffic area, the other two.
Like three or four lanes of traffic.
Any other two are not in an area that would be analogous to the traffic.
Did y'all have concerns at CVU about traffic?
There's none there.
Yeah, they don't have a problem.
Where that goes.
Off the road.
It's coming into the school and going out, eighty percent.
There's a cautious light for just incoming.
What do you think, Mike?
I, I. We, we have a need for something that we can change remotely, I'll, I'll go with that. I have watched the board as we've gone through the year and I'm sitting here pondering, why can't we use the board? But to get the number of messages across that we need to get across, in the number of languages that we need to get out.
Yeah.
Lend themselves to some type of electronic display. I guess I'm set where, where Julian was on a red. And I, I don't know if it's.
Can I ask Sean to explain why the administration wants the one or two options in more detail?
Basically because of the sharpness and the ability to put images.
And what kind of images?
Pictures of, of students, pictures of events, like you could put like the flyers for STEM night for. Pictures of, of students, um, pictures of events, like you could put, like, the flyers for STEM night, for iLab, Share at Night, those kinds of things. And I guess when I'm looking at it as, between option two and option three, uh, you know, you're talking about a twenty-five hundred dollar difference. So I, I get the, you know, the twenty-nine, it's a lot, it's a lot of money and are you really getting much for, for that? But I think that extra money so that you could have the flexibility to do images would be helpful.
I changed my mind, Sean. I'd go with option one. I'm looking at it as a price too, like, if you break it down into the price of it, for the extra technology, the ability to foresee foreseeable future of needing it for something, why not go with something, it's just five thousand dollars more?
I guess my biggest concern with the pictures and the ability to move is that we will. If you have a lot of different things on there with pictures, things with many words, I'm not worried about the person sitting at the stoplight waiting to get out of the lot. I'm, I'm concerned that it's a distraction for people coming down Main Street, uh, trying to read or look at the sign and not seeing the light change in, in both directions. That's, that's where my concern is. It's the, if you've got the red, the monochrome, there's no pictures, it's words. If it's, at that point, happens not to be in English, I, I'm really probably gonna wait either for the next one or pass right through. If it is in English, I don't know how many words you get on it, but what I've typically seen is the relatively large font, few words, read quick, and, and move on. I think with a larger number of pic, larger number of pixels, smaller number of words, more content per message possible, longer time to read and not miss, not recognize the fact that somebody in front of me has now stopped. That's my concern, is that if you put pictures and you put words and you can do those, I think it's gonna be a major distraction. Now, if the, if the aim is to have it be a sign for, um... Parents, people that frequent the parking lot, I could be had potentially for putting option one in the parking lot between the two exit ramps, where when people are, there's one out there, there was one out there, it's just a small little guy, but there's nothing on it. That, there's no distraction from the road.
We have to run power over there. We don't have power in the middle right now. It's only by the existing sign.
People who are, who are going by, and I think, because it's a great PR thing in terms of like what, all the cool stuff that's really happening in the school and getting that information out there too.
But that's part of my concern, is all of that information is, we need to get it out, I agree. But if you keep flashing different messages, I can read it all day long. I don't know. I mean, you...
I guess I'm not as concerned about the distraction, because I feel like in, in our society, we have things flashing at us all the time on the road. I mean, we all drive through the roundabout for goodness sakes. Somehow we manage that and there's a lot of distractions.
But if this thing beeps, I have to pick it up and look at it.
No, you don't, that, because it's illegal now.
I've been trained to pick it up and look at it.
You don't look at your phone.
I'm not as, I don't know, I think glancing at stuff and getting information is what those things are for. And we see it all the time as we drive down Route Seven and there's lots of stuff going down and you're checking like what movies are on and what's, but I don't know.
Do we need to have any kind of zoning for that though?
Mm-mm, no. Mick's already worked on all that and there's...
Would we have to if there was a concern from public safety?
If all of a sudden there was a rash of, yeah, of incidents, I would, yeah.
But don't you think...
But ahead of time, there is no like traffic safety study requirement or anything that we have to do.
Well, so let me ask you this, if, if, if you weren't concerned with traffic, Mike, if we had some data to say that, you know, don't worry about that, you know, Tori's right hypothetically, uh, would you, what, what would you, where would you fall then?
I mean, I'm always for the technology.
So then, one?
I'm going for, yeah. If you've got it there, but...
Because reality is...
I mean, it gives you the flexibility to be able to, and I think the example was to, to maybe scan in a...
Flyer.
A flyer of some sort and, and throw it out there, right? You don't have to type it in, you don't have to gen it up by pixel.
Yep.
You can put it in.
And then you can say to your child, hey, I saw a flyer on the thing, do you have that in your backpack for me?
That's a great point.
Is that the bottom all crumpled up?
They all come back after they turn seniors and they force them to clean their locker. They'll all show up. So let me, let me do this then, because quite honestly, the, the cost, I wanna make sure that we can tap into something for the other groups that, that will wanna use it, I guess. But how about a twenty-five thousand dollars from the board? The balance, if we want one, and the stand to come from wherever.
Let, let me ask one more question. Uh, how long do these things last?
I don't know. It's a good question.
If it's a twenty-year board, uh, you know, okay, no, you know, then the difference between five thousand dollars is nothing. But if it's a five-year thing...
Yeah, that's a great question. I haven't, I haven't seen that on the...
Parts for a warranty for five years.
So here's, here's the concern that I think I'm getting after. I can, I don't know that option four, uh, the amber two-sided, is, with only six lines, is gonna serve anything for purpose over time. Between twenty-four and twenty-six, I don't see any difference whatsoever. The twenty-nine is just a little on the high end. So rather than making a decision, I'm saying if we put twenty-five thousand in...
You guys can decide the rest.
And we can get the support to go to the high end and put some, you know, you gotta put legs on this thing, otherwise it don't stand up. And so if you can find the legs, somebody to put the legs on it...
I'm just gonna say, try to sway the members to option one. Is, this has been a contention of this board for years before, probably, you might have been on the board when last...
We were on the board last one when we talked about it.
Alright, and we got shut down. And I just think that it was a lot more expensive then too, or maybe just about the same amount.
It's about the same.
So now times are changed, it's what, five, six years later? It's back in front of us, it's something we've always really wanted for our district. Why not go with the gold, get it done and over with, and then have it there for everything we're gonna need in the foreseeable future? We don't know what that is, but it could be any given thing. We don't know technology changes that fast.
And I guess my only point is the twenty-five thousand covers option three. Comes damn close to covering option two. And if somebody is interested enough to put the high end in, there's a little work that needs to be done to get to that point.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with that.
Option three covers it. Covers the need, both sides, multilingual comments out, repeated messages.
But wait a minute, so we're not saying which option to pick, we're just saying, we're gonna put this much money in and Sean can do the work to figure out how he wants to pay for the big sign if he wants to.
Because I don't... The sharper sign, it's the same size.
The more colorful, imageful...
Clarity, it's more clear.
Well, one and two both have image capability.
Yeah, yeah, right, I got it, I got it.
That's the difference in money, is the image...
I mean, are you saying you wanna go thirty, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I would like to do thirty. I don't see why we can't.
I'd go with option, option one. I mean, if, if, I mean, can you find...
If thirty thousand, and then, and then if we wanna decorate it and stuff, then you can say a PTO can go with it and stuff like that.
But the twenty-nine doesn't include the legs. Well said, it needs to stand on something, so...
So that's what you'd...
I feel like that, that's gonna cost five-ish something, you know?
So if we do the thirty for the actual sign and then we let them...
PTO for the legs.
Exactly. And boosters, because it's gonna be for sporting and stuff like that, so... If they each pitched in. And then if it doesn't, then parents can get together and fundraise.
And, and to be clear, this is coming out of our reserve fund?
Right.
Which is at six forty-three at the moment?
Uh, well, available is the five, well, after this is four eighty-two, if I saw, four sixty-eight.
Four fifty-eight.
With all, with everything else.
But you're giving a little, you're, with the twenty-five, originally in my calculation, it was fifteen, so this would be four forty-eight.
Four forty-eight.
You look at six A.
After all, everything, if we approve everything.
I'm in.
I'm in.
I'm in, yeah, that's a, that's a, yeah. We're not breaking the bank here, that's a, I feel like that's a responsible use of this fund and that's what it's for.
And that becomes the issue, is it, is it, do we believe it is a responsible use of the money that are available?
It's an overdue responsible use.
I mean, it, yeah, it, it, now, I mean, when you, as you're talking here, I'm thinking, okay, so...
I move that we accept to...
Finish your sentence.
For the sign, and you can finish your sentence now.
Okay. Well, it's just that as I look at these pictures, I'm thinking, well, if you're gonna buy something new, why would you buy the old thing? Might as well buy the new thing, in ten years, it'll be something else. So that's my evolving thought.
Back to your original question, or your previous question, does life matter?
Pardon?
Useful life of this thing. Useful life of this thing mattered?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be real curious to know. It sounds like five years guarantee and then after that, probably you start buying repairs and stuff. So I'd be curious to know about what, what the estimates are like and if there's like an extended warranty, I don't know. That's all your deal?
Yep, I got that.
I don't know. I'm down for thirty. I'm, I'm, I move that we accept that.
So make the motion again, please, so we...
I move that we remove thirty thousand from the reserve account to pay for the sign. To cover option one.
Up to thirty thousand.
Rainbow, sorry.
Uh, just a, um, when would this be installed? It'd be installed for twenty-seventeen school year, twenty-eighteen school year?
During the summer. The summer it would be installed.
So you'll get to enjoy it.
Yeah, look at that big smile.
Frank's ready, I'm ready.
The only thing that is too bad is it's not movable to face it when you want and you could like put the whole graduation on there or something.
Oh, like a big screen television!
So, alright, did I have somebody accept the, the said motion?
I, um, what am I supposed to do, like, you, no, you made the motion, then we just discussed and then...
Any discussion?
And we just discussed, and now we vote?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Nay, okay.
So excited.
Wait, so you opposed?
Yes, mine, mine is nay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I wish I could vote.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, thank you for leading that one. You said it might take some time.
Alright, now do we go to number four? This is our switches and fiber.
Switches and fiber.
Sweet.
Okay, so that, that first paragraph on the summary, I, I already explained to, to everybody. Uh, the bids that came in were list, are listed below that with the vendors. Chambers chose to just bid the fiber run and not the switches. Everybody else, um, chose to just bid the switches. So, um, the recommendation in consultation with, with Marion Kenseth and Brian Thompson, our IT coordinator, is to award the, the contract for the fiber to Chambers and for the switches to Gov Connection. And then down at the bottom, you have the, uh, if you were to do that, the amounts and then the E-rate contribution and then the cost to the district.
That is fabulous E-rate.
Yeah, that's pretty great.
That's wonderful. Is that coming from federal government?
Yeah, and that's a percentage, pretty much?
Yeah.
That's wonderful.
Is it okay to have just one proposal for the fiber run?
Just need a waiver, because it's over fifteen.
Well, so, yeah, nobody else bid on it, but it was part of a, a, a bid. So we got, we met the three bid requirement, because all these vendors bid on the total. Request, even though they chose not to bid on one portion of it.
Okay, good.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, if there was a bid twenty-five, do we have a sense of whether or not that's a fair bid?
Uh, according to Marion, that is a fair bid.
You think, okay.
Of course she would've went back.
Don't know that that's, yeah. I just understand, I understand a little bit about what that's gonna take and it's not a lot of...
Okay.
Uh, just one question, let me, let me diverge from this. We did something quite some time ago where we, as I understand from Jay, we dragged a, a main line into the school from, with fiber.
For the internet connection.
Yeah, and we set up the infrastructure in here. Is this a...
This is gonna broaden that.
Okay, this isn't a band-aid to help, okay.
This is gonna broaden the, the bandwidth.
Okay, perfect, alright.
That looks incredible.
Any other discussion? This one seems like pretty clean.
So the motion needs, there's two pieces to this. You have to accept the bid and then you have to, um, allot up to... We put, I, I asked up to twenty to cover a, a little bit over the eighteen that's listed there. So that's the two pieces, first, accept the bid, and secondly, allot the money from the, the capital reserve.
Do we have to accept the bid that we're gonna use? Make a motion to accept the bid we're gonna use?
To accept the, the, um, to award the contract to Chambers for the fiber, fiber run and Gov Connection for the switches.
And then up to twenty thousand dollars.
Yep.
So I would accept the motion to accept the bid from Chambers for the fiber run at twenty-five thousand and from Gov Connection for the switches at ninety-six, two fifty-one. And to allocate twenty thousand dollars from the reserve fund for that work.
So moved.
Any other discussion?
I, I just wanna reiterate for anybody who's watching here, that the total cost of this job is a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars and we're putting in twenty thousand. And there's a federal program that covers the difference, which is remarkable.
Okay, can you repeat that, please?
The motion?
By, who, who made the motion?
I think it was Mike.
Oh, you made the motion?
Yeah, I don't do that often. It's a motion to accept a bid from Chambers for a fiber run at twenty-five thousand dollars.
And Gov Connection.
Oh, I thought Chambers was...
And the bid from Gov Connection for the switches.
Okay, got it.
And we've had an accepted motion, so all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was an upgrade rather than a band-aid on something that we could do something different with, so, great.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
We can still have our discussions.
Yeah, it's good.
Alright. We are now at switches and accountability. Board monitoring, uh, so we're all set with the, that section now, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think we got it all. So the board monitoring report on three dot two, I did not get a chance to do that one this month, so we're gonna push that one to our next available section. We'll take that up in the annual agenda here in a second.
Okay.
Alright, with that, we'll move down to the student report to the board.
So, I, every month, we always title our reports. Um, this one's called Blue June Blues, because she's leaving. Okay, so I'll start, we left off last time, we kinda left off at prom-ish. Prom was on May twentieth, it was pretty, it was pretty good, I guess. Uh, photos are featured on the website, if you'd like to see all the prom photos, they're on the website. The highlight of the night was one of our teachers, Lucas Dunn, being lifted on the shoulders of a student and he was jamming out to one of the songs, I don't remember which one, and it was very funny. Okay, um, so yeah, the photos are on the website if you'd like to look at them. Next, we have spring into the arts, uh, the week after prom, which is the week of the twenty-third, I believe. Uh, paintings and art were displayed all around the school all week. And, uh, spring into arts was kicked off with community performances at the O'Brien Community Center, uh, featuring some really cool cultural dancing, some performances by the music department at our school, and it was a nice event. And then on Tuesday, we had the pops concert, uh, for the middle high school, chorus, orchestra and band. And then on Thursday, we had the elementary music concert, uh, which had featured the orchestra, chorus and band as well, I believe. And there's also the, um, empty pots event, hungry pots.
Hungry bowls.
Balls. Balls event, okay, and that was also that week as well to help, um, fundraise for people in need of food and hunger. Um, and then we ended it with the annual Memorial Day parade that was, that featured Winuski Little League teams, girls, the Girl Scouts and the middle high school band. And that was on the twenty-eighth, on Saturday. On May twenty-seventh, the seniors had their annual senior expo. There are many impressive projects on display, but most impressively was the fact that all seniors that presented that day had passed. Including this one here. And then we had the People's Bank Marathon. Many Winuski teachers and families participated in the marathon on May twenty... Um, and then we had the People's Bank Marathon. Many Winuski teachers and families participated in the marathon on May twenty-ninth, Sunday, even though it was scorching hot. In fact, it was canceled, um, a few hours early, and so it kinda sucked for a few of the runners, but we had a lot of participants from our community. Um, student voice group, the speak-up group, the grade six to twelve speak-up group, um, that Matthew Webb leads, um, had their last meeting last Tuesday, and we finalized some documents. The numbers of the group had dwindled down, but there is now a strong core. And, um, the students had come up with three core projects that they will undertake for next year's speak-up group. And so we created a constitution, a survey to attract more members, um, and finding ways to survey student opinion so that we get a more overall representation of student voice and opinions.
And is it just for high school?
Uh, for six to twelve. We're still trying to figure out whether or not we wanna split up the high school and the middle school to have two separate groups. But we still want the hu, whole idea of gathering opinions from both sections. Um, we had a cool event on May thirty-first with people from Kazakhstan. Um, I believe three people from Kazakhstan came to visit Winuski and to learn about student voice and how it's being implemented at Winuski and other educational opportunities that students had here. Um, diverse student group, ranging from, um, people who are in music, people who are in sports, people into STEM, and et cetera. And how, and, um, these were high school students, and they got the opportunity to work with these people and, uh, talk to them about what's going on in our school, um, how awesome our community is. And, um, they were really impressed. Um, they were also accompan, accompanied by a translator and people from the US Department of Education, and they were also very impressed with what we were doing here. So it was really cool. Um.
Kazakhstan came to Winuski?
Mm-hmm.
What, what's really fascinating to me about that is Kazakhstan's huge.
Yeah.
And they, uh, they don't have the best human rights record in the world. And they're, they have people who are really interested in looking at student voice, which is fascinating.
Right.
That, that, that's happening.
Totally.
Yeah, and then they come to Vermont. And they came through the Vermont Council of World Affairs.
Of course.
Who we work with.
Those guys are great.
Yeah.
Global engagements.
Mm-hmm, right there.
Coming to us.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Um, there are another, a few other things. Um, this was featured on the superintendent report. The middle school had a, um, whole school, school-wide camp, a field trip to Camp Abenaki on June first. It was a fun event that consisted of swimming, team building, canoeing, kayaking, a barbecue, et cetera, and I heard it was a lot of fun. Um, the V A M L E conference also occurred. Uh, it's an annual conference in which, um, two eighth-grade students from every single school and, and every single middle school in Vermont is invited to be honored as a Vermont scholar leader. And so on June second, we had two of our eighth graders, Diraj and Tavareek, that were honored as representatives of for Winuski.
Great.
Alright, on to sports. Uh, baseball and softball ended on a good note, even though we did not get to playoffs. The seniors were started off on a very good note as well. Uh, but track and field was a powerhouse team this year. We went to States and came home with many medals and awards. Um, many Winuski awards were given in relays, hurdles, triple jump, long jump. I don't think there was an event where we weren't in, and there are many, uh, award winners in first place, the fourth place. So we really killed it in that area.
Boys and girls?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I think two state champions, Mun Arbo in the hurdles.
Jason Trum.
And Jason Trum in the triple jump.
Um, yeah.
Long jump or triple jump?
Triple jump. He almost beat the school record. He was just not sure.
Sure?
Yeah. Yeah, it was very impressive. Uh, the last athletic banquet occurred on Sunday, June fifth. There are many awards given, like awards for sportsmanship, the Spartan Award, number one fan award. Uh, the freshman award was given to Nicola Plant, Amna Chechak, Amna Chechak, and Andy Seiki. Uh, the sophomore award was given to Ellie Nahimana. The junior award was given to Mariah Mativier, Vishnu Karawada, and Eddie Lamson. The senior award was given to Brandon Bigelow, Taylor Langley, and Nikki Deng. The seniors got their senior blankets, which looked super comfortable. Uh, Coach Philian was honored for retiring, and along with the football coaches, since they are now returning next year. Um, this Monday, we had the annual wellness of, uh, the entire school was held in the gym. Uh, there was a slideshow of photos for the entire year, and free popsicles were handed out. Uh, before this, a parade occurred in the hallways of the entire school. Seniors walked from the elementary school to, all the way to high school to celebrate, uh, the graduation of our amazing seniors, and, um, they entered the rally at last, yep, um.
Is that new tradition?
Yeah, I think we're doing this. It happens a lot in other high schools, but new for us. Yeah. Um, on Monday, June sixth, the Winuski Middle High School band went downtown Burlington, to downtown Burlington to perform as part of the Discover Jazz Festival, uh, from two-thirty to three-thirty. And our own, uh, Sean McManon got to see us perform, and I heard you did some participating in our YMCA, uh, performance. Yeah, that's my favorite. Um, uh, Junpo has finally arrived. Uh, the middle schoolers had their Junpo on Tuesday and Wednesday, and now are spending the rest of their time with their field day and Spartan Games. In the Spartan Games, third place went to Mr. Gore, second place went to Mrs. Graves, and first place went to Mrs. Richard.
It's like their six-time win in the Spartan Games.
Got an alum over here, a cocky alum. Uh, high schoolers have had their first Junpo today, and tomorrow will be the last. Uh, of course, with both the middle and high school Junpo, there are many awesome and unique projects. Uh, today, the high school ended their Junpo, their first Junpo day with a final award ceremony, and tomorrow, uh, there will be a special end-of-the-year activity, which is most likely a four-way volleyball game.
I heard it's fourteen. It's gonna be a fourteen-way volleyball game tomorrow.
What? Oh, my god. New news. I don't know how they're gonna say. Um, I hope it's four-way. That way, the seniors can defend their, um, two years in a row winning streak. So, uh, the senior honors dinner on June seventh, which was last night, uh, the seniors were honored and invited, by being invited to a relaxing dinner at Wind Jammers. For a fun night together between the students and faculty, many tears were shed, and many memories were shared, uh, and it was very nice. Um, and the elementary had their field day slash, uh, end-of-the-year celebration. Uh, despite some weather concerns, the elementary went outside to celebrate the end of the year and participated in a combination of unique creative building exercises, field day-styled events, and a nice barbecue. Uh, that happened today. My bad. Uh, each grade, uh, colored the school with their bright-colored star shirts, representing a different color. It was absolutely adorable. Uh, next, the ambassadors for peace class hosted a trash pickup day today for an hour after school. They invited anyone who would like to join and gave candy to those who participated.
Is that Peace Jam?
Uh, it's the ambassadors for peace class. Yes, it's a, yeah, it's an actual, uh, class for credit, social studies credit.
Oh, sweet.
Yep. Coiled up by Mrs. Mason and Ms. Houghton, who are the ones who run Peace Jam. Um, uh, next, uh, the senior trip is occurring tomorrow. The senior class will be heading to the Great Escape for fun time. Also, Project Grad is set to occur on June eleventh. The seniors and their guests will be locked in St. Michael's for the entire night, so from Saturday night to Sunday morning. There will be food, sports, and board games, bouncy castles, and gifts. I'm really excited for the bouncy castles. And now, on to some graduations. The fifth graders had their graduation barbecue on June third. Uh, the middle schoolers have their graduation tomorrow, June ninth, at six-thirty. Kindergartners have their gra, graduation on June tenth at eight AM, where Mrs. La Forest will be honored after her many, many years of dedication to the school. Letters written from students who she has affected, and these students from third graders to alumni, will be given to her, and of course, she has coordinated the kindergarten dance. And then high schoolers have their graduation on June eleventh at one, and then Rainbow has some, uh, final words.
Goodbye, Ladanya.
Okay, those aren't my final words, but, um, um, as we mentioned earlier, we, um, wanted, uh, to update the whole process to getting a new student representative for, um, our school board. And so since Ladanya is leaving, and I will be a senior, we definitely need one more board member, uh, student rep that is younger than for the both of us. And so, um, what we wanted to do is, uh, the process as of now is an application system in which, um, Mr. McManon, um, opens up the application to, uh, any people who are interested in taking part in this role. But what we wanted to add on to this process was to make it so that, first of all, more people know about it, and second of all, so that it's more, like, a definitely more open voice about representing, representing the student body. And so, because sometimes, we don't get all the information as many people do, 'cause it's just two of us representing an entire student body. And so what we're hoping on doing is, um, we're hoping on ki, kinda having a democratic vote, um, among the entire high school for a representative either, um, who will be a rising sophomore or a rising junior next year. And so we're hoping on kinda voting in fall, uh, before the September, October board meeting, and we'll have our student representative then. And what we're trying to do, we're definitely trying to avoid a popularity contest. We truly want someone who thinks that they can represent their, their student body, and has a strong voice, and has a sense of responsibility to be, um, taking on this role as a student member on the board. And so we're hoping on, um, hopefully implementing this new, these new aspects of it to the process, while the application part is still in it. So, yeah.
I think this, you get, you guys have stepped up this year to set an example of those that follow in the voice, um, expected and needed on the board, so. This sounds like a great add to the process.
Yeah.
I appreciate you taking the steps to push for that more open view, so.
Still working out the kinks.
It's all a work in progress, always. Great.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next session here is a, uh, discussion point. We have a new board member we must, uh, put in place, uh, until March. Mohammed, uh, Abdi had submitted his letter of resignation last week based on, uh, time he's actually gonna spend again this year out of the country getting his education aligned. He's got another six months in Africa, with the six months last year. He didn't think it was fair to leave that position filled for that period of time, so. Um, if, in the board packet here, we have our charter, um, we have the charter detail in it, and in there, I think the, there was really nothing that needed a whole lot of other, I mean, we, we get to pick a person to fill that duty until the next election, and then, fortunately, the next election was the end of Mohammed's term anyway.
Oh, okay.
So the person that we get to fill will be until March, but we need somebody to run in, for election in March. So this ends up being somewhat equivalent to yours, where it's a try-it-before-you-buy-it.
Yeah, run again.
Um, case, so, um, with that, I'd like to, we have to do this in a special session.
Pointing to me.
Interview. Um, what we did the last time was the actual interview and the vote, the tick. We had two po, two persons. It worked out extremely well, um, in that, in that situation. So what, two things we gotta do tonight is discuss very briefly, how do we get the word out to the community for people that would be interested to do it? And we need to pick a date to have the special meeting, so that we can put a date in that says, we need you to decide by such-and-such a date, and an interview will happen on some date. I'm thinking at this point, uh, we're probably gonna forego a July meeting, so we could use a day in July to do that, if that works. It'll give us about a month to get word out to the community, which hopefully will be enough time. So, um, I have no plans in July to be out of state for any reason, so I'm pretty open. I would like to throw out, just for what it's worth, the second Wednesday in July, just for the consistency of being the same day the board meeting would have been.
And we can, we just need a quorum, right?
We can do, we need a quorum.
What day is that? What is the, our luck?
Julian's on his Griswold tour.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Oh, that's right, okay.
And how long are you going for?
I'll be back August fifteenth or twentieth, I'm saying.
Nice.
July thirteenth. And, and, so you're leaving right at the end of June? You're out at the end of June?
Uh, June seventeenth or seventeenth.
Oh, okay.
Would we have to be present?
You wouldn't have to be. But you could be.
Interesting question. I think I would love to have the opinion of us, yeah, I would, I mean, you obviously would be welcome, but to.
Please, yeah.
You know?
Why not?
Certainly would be welcome, but yeah, I, if, if you can make it, I think that would be a, a good voice, 'cause what we're gonna do is the interviews, and then we go into our session, have a discussion, pick somebody, and move forward, so. July thirteenth, work?
July thirteenth?
Yeah.
Six-thirty, same time?
I would do six-thirty, same time as always, same place as always.
Same place, same time?
Tori, any?
Champlain College.
Concerns without not being able to do that?
I might be going to Bluegrass Festival, but.
I don't know about that yet. So we'll say yes for now.
Okay, 'cause we do need a quorum if we're gonna.
We do need a quorum, right, so there's three of us, okay.
Three of us.
Three of us left.
Okay. Alright, um.
Six-thirty or six?
Yeah, we'll go with six-thirty again, just to keep it consistent.
Good.
Um, okay. And so, you know, obviously, if you have anybody that you know, especially you, with a relatively short runway here, if you have anybody you know, you can let them know to keep their eye posted on wherever. I, I was thinking posting it on Front Porch Forum would be at least the,
Yes.
The one place to put it. I got the, I got the school newsletter for, um, the next one coming here for June, so I will put it in there as well.
Great.
That, we know then, we've hit every household in the city, whether that's red or not, but, and at Front Porch Forum, we hit.
Website.
Another, we can put it on the school website, for sure.
Maybe have to see if the city can put it on there or something.
If only we had a signboard. It's amazing how quickly.
It'd just take an hour to put it up, but we can do it.
Maybe you can have the janitor spend their last duty going in and putting up that.
Tonight's time.
Guys are killing me.
If, if, uh, whatever you're gonna put in the newsletter.
Yep.
Uh, if you get that, then I'll put it on the website.
We'd have like a whole, we'd fill this space.
Okay, so, so the, the newsletter, Front Porch Forum, um, I can talk to Deke maybe about the city website, but definitely the school website.
Oh, that's a great idea, the city website.
Mm-hmm. Some connections over there.
Okay, I will take care of that. And I wanted to let you guys know that you're setting the bar on the school newsletter, you know, the top ten thing reasons. Guys are setting the, the bar higher on that.
The newsletter?
Mm-hmm.
I don't.
You wanna read that?
I am not going to follow your chisels.
Okay, next. Moving right along.
You value life.
The other, the other item in here then is we'll need a, an action item to give, we still have a couple of.
Wasn't that the question?
We still.
Are these minor or major behaviors?
We will have a counseling section.
It's a minor by one right now.
So the other thing we need, we still have a couple of positions to fill, based on the fact that we're not gonna be getting together again, um, in, in the formal setting, potentially while they get those done. Sean had asked if, if you guys would give me the approval to approve the licenses for the last couple of hires. There's at least two, if not three, left to do, rather than doing them in our, like, consent agenda. If you give me the approval to approve those, I can make sure that they're solidified when they come through.
Is that a motion, or what, what happened?
That would be, the motion would be to give me that permission to do that.
Okay, alright.
And then it's for a couple of hires, so.
Mm-hmm. I move to, uh, invest you with the authority to make that license decision when the time comes.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, last couple of items, we'll review the draft of the annual agenda plan. Um, so in here, it was relatively small in there, but, um, Sean, you had put in the new policies to try to stay on our three-year cycle. We left in the, the, um, time with the legislators. Some may be more interested in others, depending on what happens. Um, I put in more of, well, so let me, let me go to a different point. We've been reviewing, out of the eight, um, policies that Sean has to report to us on, we've done four each year over, on a two-year cycle.
Alright.
We've talked about and decided in this agenda to put those into a, continue them to be only four a year, rather than reviewing all eight in one year until we get the ends finished up, and, and the work to get the data for those, to give the time to do the, to do the work on, on the other end, where we haven't gotten that fit yet. So are you guys okay with continuing on a four policy, four policy cycle? Four and four, rather than all eight in one year? If we need to bring anything in in one year, we can drag it back. So we have that, we have that ability. Haven't seen any reason to suggest that we would wanna do them all in a, all in a year under a, you know, crisis.
I bet the, the, um, rhythm we have with it is just enough to sort of. I bet the, the rhythm we have with it is just enough to sort of take in all that information and be really thorough with the ones that come up to us.
Yeah.
That, that's felt really good.
Okay.
Yeah.
One thing I'm wondering is if there might be ways to align the focus on learning with our policy focus. So, I mean, I don't want to make it too lockstep because, you know, so much more interesting learning going on than just what we're doing in the policies, but like, you know, tonight about behavior and discipline was a really nice fit with the last policy that we did when we looked at them.
Alcohol, tobacco and
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so it may not always fit, you know, but where there, where there is a fit, I think that'd be really a helpful way to kind of feed into the policy discussions. To if we could open up with a focus on learning piece that was relevant to that.
Yeah, that's a good.
Because I think the, the piece that has to take precedence is the policies that are coming forward.
Yeah.
Because we've got to keep them on a three-year cycle. You can move them around a little bit, but
Yeah.
So if the focus on learning can somehow segue and either precede it.
Yeah, yeah, either, either a month before or even, even at the beginning of the meeting because that still informs the thinking when we get to the discussion.
Right.
And what we've done the last couple of years is kind of ask you guys, what are some of the items that you would like to see? And focus on learning and then we go back and come up with the topics for the year, so. We can do that again at the annual agenda and see if we can look at what the policies are and come up with some things.
Yeah, because out of all of our policy governance work, the focus on learning is the one piece that ends up in looking at the means.
Mm-hmm.
And not continuing to focus on the ends, so it's definitely so, but to, to tie it into how it's going to help us with the ends works.
Yes.
And I like the fact that the question of policy came up.
Yeah.
Because that's how we, that's how we interact, right? I mean, that's, we bump into each other right there.
And again, the last thing we want to have is
Limitations that don't benefit our kids.
Moving the numbers to
Yeah.
Meet what you want rather than getting the outcomes you need.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing that I put in here again is gotta try to get onto this cycle is the, is getting our board review of our policy.
That's what I was gonna ask you about. So being that this was our first year of really doing it, like obviously there's times where it's not gonna work, like reviewing it during budget season.
Yeah, I tried to avoid, I tried to avoid most of that.
That's why I was wondering if you fixed all that.
Yeah, I tried to, I tried to as best I could keep the, keep, i- if you look at
Yeah, I see right here.
The section three there, I tried to leave November, December and January
Open.
Relatively clean. I got one stuck in there, the two dot four. No, that's Sean's.
Four point two.
Yeah, four point two down below.
We will have to put three point two in there somewhere.
Yeah, and we'll have to wedge three point two in somewhere or just do it the following year. I think what, what'll happen with ours is the same thing that's happening with Sean's. It's gonna take some time on the first pass.
Right.
The second pass, though not necessarily a rubber stamp, will be at least an outline that we know what we've got. And, and an improvement from that, so. Just, I just want to give the heads up that we'll be trying to get these cleaned up and done a- as we go through next year, so. Those are in there as well. Otherwise, you know, the, the auditor's report, all the standard stuff that we've had in there that keeps coming back seem to work. I did, it, it just, the other piece was Successful and Productive Lives Forum and the Healthy Lives
Oh, yeah.
October and February, so one before budget and one after, which is going to segue into the next topic of discussion, so.
I like that.
Everything in here is flexible. It is, at least it guides us so we can put a, we can put an agenda together and move forward. If you find something in here that we want to move around, we can certainly do that without much problem. That's the beauty of having a plan to work with. With that, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that's an impressive piece of work. You guys, you know, you really make it easy when you put that together like that.
It makes it easier for us when we get it together as well because you know what's coming, so. Set the date for the, oh, well, I guess we, there's no action on that one. So setting the date of the board retreat. Typically, we have gone without a July meeting. Not a lot going on, summer vacations, hard to get everybody together. We'll do the interview in July. Sounds like we could, should have a quorum. August, we have done the retreat. And so be looking for dates and again along the same line. We've been doing it on a Saturday morning. We're down to about four hours. We've done them all day, but I think the four hours was enough of an investment. It seemed like we were able to get through what we needed to get through.
Yeah.
So we'd be looking at a Saturday. We've got to stay away from the twentieth. I think you said Sean.
Good, because I'm not here the twentieth. I'm not here the sixth.
Okay.
And
And then the other one that came up was the thirteenth.
Not to do the thirteenth?
No.
Yeah, because I felt like last year
Stay away from the September third because that's the Labor Day weekend.
Yeah, I just felt like we bumped up against the first weekend of school and to have administrator, like to have everybody have to be there.
Yeah, that was rough.
I felt like that was a lot
Yeah.
To have a Saturday taken up when schools gearing up.
Was the first week of school?
Could be.
The, the first day of school for students is the twenty, uh, thirty-first, sorry. And the first day for teachers is the twenty-second. Support staff come on the twenty-fifth.
So if we did something on the twenty-seventh, that's like seven days in a, you know, that seems a lot.
So if we back it up to the thirteenth, I think you said you're not still back.
You're not back.
Can't, can't guarantee my presence at that one, no.
Yeah. Is it? Uh, what about the tenth of September? Why can't we turn the corner?
So then the question would be, do you have your regular meeting? Do you keep that on the fourteenth or do you just do the one?
And do we put a board meeting in August? I mean, missing two may back us up too much.
Well, we usually did was to use the, the retreat as the August meeting, so it would make sense that we would have our retreat on the tenth and the meeting on the fourteenth.
I would think, because I feel like what we do at the board retreat is above and beyond what we do at
Yeah.
Board meetings, so.
Right. It's trying to set yourself up for the year on what
Yeah.
What high level pieces rather than daily work.
And it actually kicks us in right to before our first official board meeting of the school year.
Yeah, I like that.
So why not just go ahead and bump them up together versus trying to get all of our, at least just as an option.
Do it a Saturday, just the tenth and August, uh, September tenth and then the board meeting.
And then the board meeting on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
So the only challenge, I
Fourteenth can't be the second Wednesday.
It is.
It is.
It is, yeah. It's, it's one of few because the first is on a Thursday.
All right.
So the only challenge would be, anything that's going to be on that September agenda will, you will not have had a chance to kind of talk about that and figure out, I mean, with three days lead time. So the September agenda may not have the hundred percent input from the full board on, so kind of be Mike and I figuring that out.
Okay.
Just so everybody understands that, I guess.
Okay.
I'm saying if, if you, if we're doing the retreat and setting a lot of the annual agenda items on the tenth and then we have the meeting three days later, the agenda's really supposed to go out on Friday the ninth.
Yeah.
So we will not have all met to put a lot of detail to that yet.
Right, no, I think, I was thinking
I think we have enough.
If we're gonna do it that way, we set the September agenda up to this. We're not going to set agenda items specifically unless we make changes down the road on Saturday for the Wednesday meeting. We'll, we'll keep September meeting pretty much to this.
Yep.
And we'll all be immersed in the information because we'll have been together that Saturday, yeah.
All lined, okay, so September ten, retreat. And fourteenth is the normal board meeting. Okay.
So is that an eight to noon thing again?
Yeah, that seemed to work out okay. Get us
Saturday morning, seriously? Come on, school's starting?
We can go six to ten, I'm up.
Six to ten.
Offering alternatives.
Yeah, not Saturday.
Eight.
Best offering alternatives. I'm here to be flexible.
So gracious of you.
My way. Okay. All right. Um, so I, I wanted to have, since, since we're not going to get again, together again until
Oh, we miss each other.
So we have to do our collaboration meeting with the city too. Maybe that's what we do with our September meeting.
Is it their turn or our turn?
It would be ours. We met down there last time.
We did, didn't we?
Good.
What was it, the O'Brien Center? We had the police fashion show, was it last time?
So the piece that we do with them is the MOU?
Yes.
Pretty much.
So we can get that done and taken care of without having to do two meetings like we've done in the past.
Okay. And then some brief discussions about our interactions with each other and anything that's gone on in the last year that can be better, worked well, continued, discontinued. Gotcha. Okay, so you don't mind reaching out to Deek?
No, I'll do that.
Seth?
Yep.
So if we're not going to get back together now until the retreat and we're going to do the Healthy Lives Forum in October, I gotta get on the horn here and try to get some folks lined up. I need some input on what does that mean?
Ah, yeah.
Yeah.
What does that mean and who can help?
It'd be so great to look at it from the mental, emotional, physical, you know, all that, like Center for Mindful Learning, but you know, also physical health. The mental health, like maybe even what about tying in some of the opiate work? You know, in terms of a health, like if we're looking at like a healthy community as a healthy individual, some of the traps.
Yeah.
And, and how do we?
Well, just that general early childhood ed stuff, the Promise Community stuff, maybe.
Early child?
Play.
So in terms of invitees, there's a whole, you know, the Promise Community work that we're doing, I mean, we have like fifty people in that group. There's many of them who are fit in what you guys are describing. So, I mean, how many, I don't know how many people you want to invite.
Fifty people can fit in here, I'm just kidding.
I think the, the ones that we've had, the six to eight seems to be
It's a good number.
A really clean number to be able to get input.
Can we make sure play is important in here with early childhood educate? I just feel like play does not get enough voice. I am, we speak for the play for healthy lives.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so you've got a
Search base man. I'm play-based.
You've got a group that's getting together for some of the same
I have no.
Yeah.
I am.
Conversation?
Similar.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, early childhood is a real focus of that group.
Okay, is there a way that we can get a cross-section that comes across, cuts across the mental, physical?
Yeah, I mean, when I, Center for Mindful Learning, we know people there.
We know people.
Early childhood, we know, you know, we can do like a Champlain Valley Head Start, some of those folks.
What about like a doctor from the Wunnebuck Family Center, from a physical?
Yeah.
Doctor Russo.
What? Oh, oh, Mr. Dr.
Garing or
Yeah, Dr. Russo's down there too, uh-huh.
Dr. Russo, right.
My boss, the dean at Champlain, is an expert on play in early education.
Right, get her, yeah, get her here.
Yeah.
Laurel Bonjourno.
Bonjourno?
Mm-hmm.
Bonjourno.
Exactly.
Let's get her here, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
Did you say Laura, Lauren?
Laurel.
Laurel?
Yeah, Laurel Bonjourno.
Pass the contact.
Yep.
I will.
Yeah, if you can pass it.
And so then something from maybe, I don't know, Howard or like mental, like sort of the, the mental edge of things?
Or act one is helpful?
Or
Do they help with that or is that through the Howard?
So I'll put together the preamble like I have in the past with the distribution, make sure we've got a small cross-section of
Oh, I'm excited to have those conversations.
About the Lund Family Center?
Yeah, the Lund Family Center?
Is that more adoption?
And Marathon Health, they have the organizational health perspective in there, right down the mill.
Organizational health.
We've actually, we've worked with them. They've kind of come in and done work with our kids and
It's gonna be a hopefully full house. This is good.
Okay. And so it's pretty much the same focus that we've had in the past, right? We'd like kids to be able to leave here knowing how to lead a healthy life physically, mentally, emotionally. And what does that mean and how do we instill it? How do we know we've instilled it?
Yes.
And about the other side, okay.
Spiritual health is another area.
Yep.
When you think about the component, there's six components of wellness, the physical, spiritual, intellectual emotional.
Yeah. Okay.
So I can kind of take those components and look at some of the people that are in our, that big group I'm working with and see who fits and
Yeah.
Put some names together and
You're gonna have to look on the, yeah. Yep. We've got some email addresses. We can do the reach out and see. All right. Good, thank you. I didn't think that that was going to come quite that cleanly, that's good.
It's like one of the easiest ones.
Easily?
Um, the other piece that is missing in the annual agenda is board development and education topics. Last year, I think we nailed it with the financial piece. I think that was critical.
We still need to do the thing about the, how to read an audit. Remember, they said there's another piece to that whole thing.
Okay, do we have our auditor? Take us through that? I thought she had
Um, there's another, I thought you said there's another like workshop type thing.
Yeah, Bob and Jean, I think the presenters had recommended someone from BSBA.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, yeah.
We were also interested in learning more about education funding.
Yep.
From a, like a broader perspective.
The statewide perspective of where does the money flow and how does it go out and come back and who makes that decision?
Maybe we should do a field trip.
Field trip.
Now we're gonna do is find somebody who knows how the whole thing works together.
Right, yeah. Is there a person who knows how that works?
He'll tell it.
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right.
It is confusing.
Okay, anything else? Any other, those are, those are two along the same financial line.
Anything else around governance that we could continue to improve upon?
Yeah, you can talk to, uh
Get all good Atlanta.
Field trip.
Cover.
I would, I don't know, we're gonna probably have, I mean, Lauren member that's gonna have to be do some refresher classes.
Uh, yeah, I, I have never found a policy governance one oh one to be something I haven't taken something out of, so.
What is the linking to community? You know, is educating yourselves around that, you know, those workbook things that I have at my house is, is we were gonna have those conversations around
Ownership linkage.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ownership.
So we should do a work session on that, bring those notebooks.
I will. Bring them to the retreat. I feel like in some ways that's a
Yeah. I mean, I think that's gonna be
Because that's the focus, is our focus is our linkage to our community and our ownership, yeah.
We've talked about several options, new, new folks in the community coming in, at least an initial outreach based on some comments from Sean.
So that would be a good deep dive into the governance piece.
Yeah, if you wanted to identify one or two areas that you really wanted to dive, like ownership linkage, sure Val, if Dr. Val should be interested in going with it.
Very specific into the ownership.
Very specific, yeah, into the ownership piece.
And then we've got to figure out how we take ac- the end result of that is how do we actually take action and get started or not started.
And I wonder, like, would the board retreat be a place to start that conversation where we do follow-up at board meetings? Because sometimes we don't get to get into it as deeply as we did, like when we did that one oh two
But what was it supposed to be?
Policy governance on a Saturday in, in, in January.
Yeah, we can do that.
Where we got into, in our, our focus there was progress monitoring reports and how to write progress monitoring reports.
Yeah, so we could, we could tag, see if she's okay with the ownership linkage piece.
Mm-hmm.
But, but ask her too, if, if that's not the work we're supposed to be doing in our meetings.
Well, it is, and I just wonder if the, because
Do the education right here?
But I felt like what I noticed about being able to do something on a Saturday with, around progress monitoring is, is really getting practice at looking at certain reports and noticing sort of we want to have and then we do the, like we talk about it here as we go over those of us that have done. Okay, here's my attempt at doing an interpretation of one of our policies that we need to monitor. And we do that work here, but we got the education on how to even start looking at it with it, you know, in a, in a deeper, I don't know if we need that, but I don't know what's involved in that, but um, sometimes it's nice to have a couple hours to really spend on it versus it just being
I saw, I thought the separate section worked better. I thought, I, I enjoyed having that focus time.
Yeah.
Rather than having to get it done because we've got to move on.
And then keep the agenda flowing, yeah.
And we're gonna be till ten.
I feel like we're multi, it's too much multitasking for my brain.
So we can try to put Val in for an ownership linkage on a Saturday somewhere.
Yep.
And, and Val will probably be the best person to ask about that. What would be the best way to get started?
Hey, and I'm thinking about following through on some of the stuff we learned, uh, who ended up being our treasurer?
Clerk.
Clerk? So are you doing that thing?
I am, I come in every Thursday.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Great.
Yay, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and so the piece with that is not necessarily just signing.
And I'm not just signing, I'm looking through.
No, because, I mean, when you said the financial auditing piece, that struck me as something that we needed to be doing, that we weren't doing.
We are doing it.
And now we're doing it.
Which is great.
And one of the things that we wanna do is to, we wanna try to document it so that somebody-
Yeah.
That gets clerked next time, A, understands what it is they're doing, and B, has a guideline on how, what they need to be looking for, so they don't have to start from scratch guessing. So we can do that after we get going here.
And the other recommendation they made was, do you wanna have, uh, probably two board members who meet with the quarterly FMR? And then the quarterly FMR is not necessarily in the consent, but it's a, you know, it's, it's an item on the agenda that the two board members have discussed with the administration ahead of time, and then they come forward and explain it a little bit first, and then open up a discussion.
You just have to explain that whole thing to me again.
Right. So it would be me and Rebecca sitting down with two board members, you know, before each quarterly report came to the board and going through the detail of all of that.
Yep.
And that would be part of those two board members understanding, like, how do I read the FMR, what are the questions I should be asking? And then, being knowledgeable enough about it, to come back to the board the next month and say, we met with Sean and Rebecca, we went through the FMR, these are the questions that we asked, you know, here's the projected favorable balance, here were the variances that happened, uh, from the past quarter, and we're recommending to the board that they accept this.
So that quickly goes though from a, from a, an education of, of the business manager to the board, to a board-directed inspection of the data that we're using.
Mm-hmm.
Going back from start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so it definitely works in both directions.
So you need two board members for that.
Well, I, I think you rotate, you know, do two this quarter, and then next quarter you take two more and take them through the education, and then-
That sounds really good.
You know, just so you have a deeper understanding, rather than right here.
Yeah.
Hey, that means you get to do it.
I get to do it, we're all in the rotate, we're all in this together, for the better.
That's right, nobody gets an out. But again, it goes then to a direct, a direct inspection piece.
You get out of having to read the bills now, though, cause-
Cause you're doing it, which is great.
Good, alright. Any other items that, uh-
Fifteen million dollars.
I think education-wise, the reading an audit, or if we can get the Vermont Education Funding, somebody in here to do that, that would be incredible. Could even do it in more budget season, it'd be even better.
Yeah.
And then the ownership linkage are the two that we'll key on.
Mm-hmm. Great.
At this point, reading an audit. Reading an audit, we can, we can quiz our auditor when she comes in this year, about what would be, what would be some ideas. Do on-the-fly training.
Yeah. Great.
And then maybe dig something up for later. Alright? Good, thank you for that, that's, uh, good, good input. And, and we've always got the policy governance one-on-one, but that's after the election, so when we get a new board member on, I'll go through the, at least the high-level, what are we doing here and how do we do it, kind of thing, and then open them up for questions after that. Good, uh, recent community activities by board members, anything?
Bring it to the arts.
Yeah.
I forgot to mention the report that this summer, just like a reminder, that I'll be going to Arkansas for my speech.
Right!
Yeah.
Will you post a video of you doing the speech?
Yeah, video will be on, apparently they have like professional recording, and it's gonna be really scary.
That's right, cause this is like the TED Talk thing, right?
Yeah.
I wanna see it.
Yeah, and so, um, it's July twenty-seven to twenty-nine, it's a three-day conference, I'm speaking on opening night, alongside the, uh, twenty-sixteen National Teacher, um, uh, I have a Nobel Educator. So, uh, there are four total speakers, let's see, the twenty-sixteen National Teacher of the Year, um, I'll be speaking alongside her.
And there's your nice old picture, look at you!
There's me, there's, um, the YouTube maths tutor, author of Calculus for Dummies, and we have, um, um, a, the founder of EduColor as well, and, um, that's gonna be July twenty-seven to twenty-nine, I'll be going with Lucas Dunn.
Fabulous!
What's that one called?
The Noble Educators Summit.
Wow, Noble Educator Summit.
Okay, yeah, I meant to ask you about that after, when, when that was, or if it had already happened, so, good. Alright.
I went to the athletic banquet.
Did you?
It's great to see how well our students do in sports.
Aww.
Amount of leadership in those kids is amazing, and there was a huge turnout.
Good.
Oh, good, when was it?
Sunday, last Sunday.
Wow.
It's one of the indicators of a healthy community.
Yep.
Or high participation rates.
Very nice to see, and it was rainy and disgusting out.
That's right, oh wow, that day.
No, it's inside, that doesn't make it any better, you know how long a walk it is from the parking lot when it's pouring?
That's true, that's true, I do, actually.
Yeah, called me up in Atlanta.
No, it was really impressive, I mean, especially in track, they really, they really destroyed, did some great work this year.
Excellent.
And they're young, some of them are really young, so it's nice to see them.
Watch them grow, yeah.
Yep.
Nice.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, good. Um, any items for the next agenda that's our retreat at this point, so? Alright, with that?
Ask us in July.